Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of September 8th, 2014. The mayor is away right now, so I will try my best to fill in his stead tonight. So let's begin with the singing of "O Canada." (Music) Thank you to our own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the music and for the National Film Board of Canada for the images you saw on the screen. We will now proceed with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. If someone move adoption of the previous minutes of August 25th. All right. Chris. Sorry. So we have Chris moves and...
Well, sorry, councillor Terrent. I do move to accept the meetings of the previous council minutes, but after going over them, there were a couple changes that need to be made to the minutes. In particular, special community living August 20th meeting, I was in attendance there and I was not marked down as an attendance. Also, community growth August 26th, this is kind of trivial, but councillor Kevin McLean was there, but he was marked down as R. McLean. And so I don't know if his middle name's Robert, but...
My election office.
And also, the council community whole, it says Monday, the 27th is actually Wednesday, the 27th, and our very own deputy mayor Rory Terrent's name was misspelt throughout with two Rs. I know you played pirates at the live theatre, but I think we should just make those and then I can move to approve.
Excellent. Is there any comments on the minutes? All right. With that, I will call the vote with moved with the amendments. Perfect. There you go. And that passes. We'll now move to the adoption of the agenda. If someone move councillor Kevin McLean. Is there any discussion on the adoption of the agenda? I will call the vote. And that passes. We now brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. And so this is a time for anyone to come forward and speak to council on any matters relating to any issues in the community. Just a note, though, that if you're speaking in regards to something that's in a public hearing, that'll come at a later time. So we do have one person on the agenda, the honourable Wayne Drysill, MLA for Grand Prairie Wapiti. And Wayne, if you'd like to come forward.
(Audio cut off.) And to give you an update on what's going on with the provincial government, but more important, I'll also hear from you guys what your concerns are as a city council. And just always, always nice to come here, and I usually come in the fall for an update. Usually I bring greetings on behalf of the premier. I'm just not sure who to bring them on behalf of today, but what the heck, I'll get in trouble and bring greetings on behalf of premier Jim Prentice. I know that's not quite right yet, but it's the first chance I'm going to practise to do that. You know, Alberta's a pretty good place to live, in fact, probably the best place there is in the world, and things are going quite well in Alberta despite what you might hear in the media and from the opposition. I think there's a reason that 100,000 people move to Alberta every year, and I think that's because they know it's the best place to be. So I just thought I'd bring that out. There's all kinds of opportunities here, and jobs, and a great quality of life, especially in a city like Grand Prairie, a good place to move to. So I think things are actually going quite well in Alberta despite what you might hear. I think what I'll do is just bring a few highlights from my two ministries, transportation and infrastructure. I'll hit the highlights and then I'll just open the floor for questions maybe. So first of all, in transportation, I'm sure most people are aware of, but if they're not, we've been working on milling work from Bezanson Inn, the famous bumps that come to Grand Prairie. And milling's pretty much complete, they're just finishing it up. And so they'll finish that up this week, and then next week they'll start the overlay. And so they'll overlay it, and that's all the way in from Bezanson. And so hopefully that will give us a smoother ride to Grand Prairie, which I'm sure everyone will appreciate. There is also a project to do an overlay in from close to Beaver Lodge there, I think it's Highway 724, also coming into Grand Prairie, they're going to overlay that section. The same company got both contracts, so I'm not sure if you'll get them both done this fall, but they're both the contracts, they completion in the fall of '14, but if they don't, they might have to finish the one from Beaver Lodge in early next spring. Also, I think most people are aware the twinning of Highway 43 through Sturgeon Light is nearing completion. They scheduled an opening ceremony a couple of weeks ago, and then last week, and then again this week, so I'm not sure when it'll actually happen, but it's really close now, they're just finishing it up. And definitely will be done this fall, so I think that's a pretty good highlight, too. We'll be able to drive full four lane from Grand Prairie to Edmonton this fall. There's some pretty important projects in the Grand Prairie area. There's a couple of minor ones, the lights at the Grand Prairie Airport were finished and they're operating now, and that should make that intersection a lot safer for coming and going. And they're also installing the lights at Claremont at that intersection, they've started the work there now, and that should be done this fall as well. So that's just some of the highlights for this Grand Prairie region here, or Grand Prairie for this fall in transportation. Infrastructure, you know, there's seven new school projects that have been announced in the last year in the region here. There's a couple that are starting shortly here, Jenko got the contract to do the Beaver Lodge and Sexsmith School, I think they're starting there, and then some of the other contracts are being awarded. So those projects will all move forward, they're all to be completed by 2016, and I'm still pretty hopeful they will be. It was a real pleasure to be able to hand over the keys to the new Charles Spencer High School here a few weeks ago, and the kids moved in last week, so that takes some pressure off our school facilities, I know. It's not going to take all the pressure off, but it's going to help, because there's, you know, a big need for schools in this area, and there's lots of projects on the go, so I'm looking forward to all of those. Also, in infrastructure, I've been working hard for six years with the Beaver Lodge community to get a health facility there, and I can't make any announcements yet, but I do know that project's moving forward as well, and I hope shortly there'll be a good announcement out there. You know, as far as building, Alberta, whether it's transportation or infrastructure, we're never going to be able to say we're done, I don't think, as the people keep moving here, we're always going to need to build schools and hospitals and roads, and it's a never-ending job, and I think that's a good thing, because if the job ends, that means the economy's not too good and we're not growing. So I think for quite foreseeable future, we'll have a lot of infrastructure and transportation projects on the go in this area. I also want to say that councillor Clayton did a very good job representing it yesterday in Edmonton, as she announced the tour bike races in Grand Prairie next fall. I think there was 65 million people watching the TV yesterday when she made that announcement. So very good job councillor Clayton, made Grand Prairie proud there. So I think with that, I'll just stop and take the questions, that's usually the best part of the night anyway, and see what your concerns are. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. I will start with councillor Jack.
Thank you councillor Terrent. Mr. Drysill, I was wondering if you could tell me Highway 40 heading south, will the work that's been started be completed before winter?
Oh, yeah, that's slated to be completed in October as well, and I think it's on track to be done. They've done a lot of the milling work there now, so I think it's mostly overlay again.
It's mostly overlay, right? Not a lot of widening, mostly overlay?
Well, there is one section of widening, passing lines, there's a couple of intersection improvements at the Warehouse Road and the Camfor Hall Road, and then it's a complete overlay from, I think, Cup Bank to the Camfor intersection.
Thank you.
Councillor Rice?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Wayne, well, first of all, a statement, I want to say congratulations, I don't recall in the history of Alberta when any MLA has been given to very large portfolios, and I think you've done an excellent job of juggling those and managing those, so thank you and congratulations. Having said that...
But I'm almost relieved it's over, because I'm getting tired. Another week, maybe.
Having said that, can you explain to us why the Building Canada Fund has been delayed? You know, we have such a short construction season, and I know they keep saying that you're going to get the money, but we also lost a construction season, so can you explain why that delay, and has anything been done to make sure it doesn't happen next year?
Well, I think that's been explained improperly by some people. We haven't lost any money there, and as you know, I mean, it might take me an hour if I explain all the details, but it's in about four different categories. For one, the gas tax, that's all been signed, and the money's free flow, and we never stopped the flow of money through that, so that's all signed up and the money's still flowing. The small communities one, I don't know if that's the one you're referring to, there's a small communities portion. Well, the grant was just announced here the 1st of April, so you pretty well had missed the construction season anyway when they announced it, but they didn't announce it with any details. And that one is $95 million over 10 years, so if you broke it out on a year, it'd be $9 million a year. Well, the administration would probably use most of that, so what we're doing is a one-time call, so we'll give out the $95 million in one call, probably in 15. I mean, they didn't have all the details, and even if we'd have scrambled and did them and did a one-time call this year, the ones that had something on the shelf ready would have had advantage over the ones that weren't. So this way, it gives everybody a chance to apply, so the application forms will be out this fall, it'll be early in 2015, you can send them in and then we'll decide on the priority. And the whole $95 million will be given out in one call, so we haven't lost any money or time there or anything, so, you know, I think that's the fair way to do it, so everybody gets a fair shot at it. The national piece of the Building Canada Fund is one that's decided by the federal government. We can apply for, we applied for one which was the LRT in Edmonton, and they turned it down, and they just then move it to the provincial one. So they moved that on to our provincial $800 million. Well, that was a $300 million project. We can apply for LRT project in Calgary, and we can apply for the Calgary Ring Road. We're afraid if we do that, they'll just move it on to the provincial one again, and then we'll have no money left in the provincial one at all. The federal government decides, and it looks like most of the ones they're approving are more international at border crossings or ports, and our guys have decided if we apply for too much there, we'll have nothing left in the provincial one. So we may apply for one more there, but I don't think we'll be successful, and it'll just reduce our provincial grant, and so then when it's done, we'll decide what's left in the provincial grant, and we're not going to do new calls on that. We'll use that provincial money, and we're hoping to put a big piece of it into water and wastewater, so everybody gets a shot at it at that, because we haven't had enough money in our budget to do all those projects across the province. So we're hoping to move some Building Canada money into the water and wastewater project in Alberta, and then we have already projects that we've been working on as Alberta government, and we'll use them to take advantage of the Building Canada money. But then when we use that money for that, it'll free up other money for other priorities around the province. So, I mean, I could get into a lot of details there, but when people say we've lost the construction season or lost money, that's just not true.
So Wayne, I'm 140 for Edmonton, when AMA met with the minister in Ottawa, he said the projects from the national fund had to be over 100 million, so that meant pretty much Edmonton, Calgary. And he said that LRT systems in Edmonton and Calgary were certainly eligible. So the fact that they flipped it into the provincial one was quite a shock, is that something we need to be sitting down with you and maybe doing a lobby with our Member of Parliament to say, "We don't appreciate that, because that hogs up a whole lot of the money"?
Well, I mean, we're surprised that they did that, they just flipped it in there, but, you know, you can talk to your Member of Parliament about that, I'd be glad to help you do that, but I don't know if it's going to change anything at this point.
Well, I don't know if it'll change anything, but it may be make sure it doesn't set a precedent. I have just one more question, if I may. The question is about schools. We're building an awful lot of new schools, but it seems that we're ordering portables before the school is even half-built. Like, why don't we build them bigger?
Well, I mean, that's again another topic, but there's, you don't see it in Grand Prairie, but in Edmonton or the big centres, if you build a large school, and then as the community matures, the kids move away and you're left with elders, and so we've got lots of schools in communities in Edmonton and Calgary, the old communities that are about a quarter-full or half-full, and we can't seem to do much about it. So what they do is they start out with a full size of portables, and then as the students move away and their enrollment goes down, they can take the portables off.
And I want to, just one comment, if I may, I want to thank you for your honesty in acknowledging that giving two contracts to the same contractor will create delays in construction. That's refreshing honesty, that it's nice to have it acknowledged.
But we still got the best bids or the lowest prices, so...
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Terrent. Wayne, thank you for coming. I've said it before, so it's a few times you've come in front of us, you're a straight-shooter, all-around good, hard-working guy, that's what's in the community, what I hear lots, so, I mean, I believe your standing's going to be very good with the new premier Prentice, where he says people should be working within their constituencies with feet on the ground. I believe you're ahead of quite a few of your colleagues, so I wanted to bring that up to your attention. But with that said, there's a couple I want to throw at you, and a couple I'm going to do at roads in the north. As councillor Rice has brought up with schools, well, we do have a big problem in the philosophy how they're working on the one model central in Edmonton is not working in the north, so I'm not going to go there, but it seems that status quo never changes, and we're putting on modulars on schools, and you know what, Derek Taylor worked and built another school, but half the students are living in modulars with the same-sized gym. So I think you know that, and hopefully they'll change the philosophy for the different areas and regions of our province. But the two I wanted to do is the roads. Number one is our roads are really falling apart up here because of heavy use. A lot of money's being made up north, and it seems like we're playing catch-up on the roads, which is very dangerous. Some of the roads go into Grand Cache, if you go in the mornings, you're six in the morning, you know this yourself, you live here, the traffic flowed from 20 years ago, and you get big holes happening all the time. It's not being kept up to par. Like, now there's some work coming, but it seems like we're trying to play after it's already done. Can you just speak to that? And then the other one is I want to bring up is the overpass road around the city, which has been on our radar for a while, but you know.
Yeah, you know, before I got there, transportation, well, the province, you know, they referred to it as the Benjamin Bubble or whatever, that was a few years ago when we had a funding shortfall in our income, and so they had to try and balance the budget and keep things on track, so they did a lot of cuts throughout. Transportation got cut about $900 million out of our budget, and quite often they like to cut maintenance budgets first, because it's easy to cut. And you can do that and get away with it for a year or two, but then it starts to catch-up to you and it shows up, and we're seeing some of that now. I've asked to, we did have an increase last year in the budget, and I've asked to for another increase this year. In this cycle, we're overlaying about 2,700 kilometres of highway in Alberta, about $753 million, I believe, which is quite a bit, it sounds like a lot, but obviously we've got a lot of work to do to keep up. But I'm confident we'll get there. We need to put more money into maintenance. It's something like, I think you have that experience in the city where you get potholes in the spring, and their maintenance, maintenance has to be done, so Highway 40 this spring had some holes, you know, patching got done there eventually, and now we're doing overlay. And I'm not saying roads are good, but we are doing a lot of work, you know, we're overlaying just about in every direction coming into Grand Prairie, and there is more work to do for sure, so I'll admit that, but we'll get more money in the budget and get it done. 43X, you know, that is a priority for me as well. I mean, we were finishing twinning 43 from Edmonton to Grand Prairie, and I think that was a priority, and I'm glad to see it'll be done this fall, so I think the next project is just to move on to 43X and finish around Grand Prairie, so I've asked to have that on our priority list for next year, whether depending on budget again and where it ends up, and I'm hoping it'll start next year, very soon to finish 43X as well.
Okay, I just finish up, Deputy Mayor Terrent. Thank you, Wayne, and once again, and the reason why I bring up our roads is we've got a lot more heavy weight on the roads, Grand Prairie and Fort Murray, than other areas of the province, and that's proven statistics, but thanks, Wayne.
Councillor Redburn?
Thank you, councillor Terrent. Wayne, good evening. Good to see you again, thanks for coming. My two questions, one was 43X, and I'm pleased to see that you see it as a priority, because as you know, it's a regional priority, all the municipalities here recognize that is our region's priority. But I want to ask about the hospital, if you could just update us both on the capital project, and we are concerned, the bypass in front of the hospital too, in terms of what are the plans there?
Well, as far as the hospital goes, the last I've been told, it's still on budget and on time, so, you know, I think completion is 17 on that. You can see lots of work coming on it now, it is looking good, so I'm pretty hopeful. Most projects seem to get rugged out a little longer than they're supposed to be, but so far they tell me it's still on time. You know, and I agree, 43X is a regional priority, and I hear that everywhere, and I'm hopeful we'll get on to that as our next major project. So once that's done, the 43X bypass, then I know we'll be dealing with the city to turn over the old bypass, but we have to get the other one done first, and then we need to do some improvements on the existing bypass. I think from what I've understood, we're doing some negotiations to make some improvements there before we turn it over.
Just one follow-up of mine. I think I saw you at our governance symposium on Friday for a while. So any thoughts in terms of that dialogue, and, yeah, from a provincial perspective, any kind of initial impressions?
Yeah, no, and congratulations for that, and it was pretty well-attended, a lot of people there. I was only able to spend a couple hours there. It's hard to spend the whole day anywhere these days, it seems like, but well-attended, some good conversation, and I think, you know, you need to start having the conversation. I don't have all the right answers, and I don't know if anybody does, and I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all either, but we need to talk about it, municipalities need to talk about it with the province and explore different options, and so I think it's good to have the conversation, and you're not going to solve it in one meeting, and I think you know that, and so that was a good start, and I heard lots of good comments from other areas about it, so congratulations for doing that, I think it was very successful, and I think there's lots more to be said about it.
Councillor Clayton?
Thank you councillor Terrent. Councillor Redburn asked my questions, but just in closing, I will echo the comments of councillor Rice, and thank you for the effort to carrying two ministries during this time. We definitely in this region appreciate your hard work, so thanks.
Councillor Rice?
Wayne, I wonder, I know you're not a messenger boy, but I wonder if you would pass on to your colleague, Minister Weddick, our appreciation. Ian, in 10 years, I have never had a minister move the review of the MGA forward as aggressively and efficiently as Minister Weddick and the new deputy minister have. It's absolutely astounding the progress that he has made, and it, you know, it's the governing legislation for municipalities, so it's obviously a huge concern to us, and the process that they've set up and the speed at which they are addressing it is really gratifying, and I don't give praise lately.
That was a bit of a shock, actually, but, no. But thanks, I'll pass that on, and we all know in the next week or two, there's liable to be changes, but hopefully that's an important piece of work that has to get done, and it's a big piece of work that isn't going to get done in a hurry, but thanks, I'll pass that on.
Thank you, Wayne. I'll echo some of the sentiments of the other council members, that, you know, we really appreciate you taking the time to come and update us on some regional priorities, and we just thank you for being open and accessible and able to have this dialogue, so thank you for coming up today.
Yes, and thank you very, I always appreciate these opportunities too, it's a two-way street, and I'm always glad when I can come and present, so thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on anything other than what's in the public hearings? All right, we'll close the delegation portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to public hearings. We have one for land use bylaw amendment C1260-13, and I will call the hearing to order and look to introduction from an administration.
Proposed amendment specifically affects Lot 4, which is highlighted in yellow. Essentially, the amendment is to accommodate a proposed business on the site, an automotive body repair shop. The bylaw wording proposed is a bit unusual, just because for auto-body repair shops, we specifically classify them under automotive and equipment repair and sales major. However, this type of use entails other things such as large equipment repair and farm equipment repair, and they didn't want to allow for these types of uses as well. So the way we prepared it was that the wording of the amendment specifically states that it is for the purpose of an automotive body repair shop, and it is only to be on Lot 4. So just to provide a little site context, to the west, we have a residential area, to the north, we have a religious assembly and an education centre, to the south, we have a contractor's facility...
And we just thank you for being open and accessible and able to have this dialogue. Thank you for coming up today.
Yes, and thank you very, I always appreciate these opportunities too. It's a two way street. And I'm always glad when I can come and present. So thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else that want to speak on anything other than what's in the public hearings? All right. We'll close the delocation portion of the meeting and we'll move on to public hearings. We have one for land use bylaw amendment C 1260 dash 13. And I will call the hearing to order and look to introduction from administration.
Proposed amendment specifically affects lot four, which is highlighted in yellow. Essentially, the amendment is to accommodate a proposed business on the site, an automotive body repair shop. The bylaw wording proposed is a bit unusual just because for auto body repair shops, we specifically classify them under automotive and equipment repair and sales major. However, this type of use entails other things such as large equipment repair and farm equipment repair. And they didn't want to allow for these types of uses as well. So the way we prepared it was that the wording of the amendment specifically states that it is for the purpose of an automotive body repair shop, and it is only to be on lot four. So just to provide a little site context, to the west, we have a residential area. To the north, we have a religious assembly and an education center. To the south, we have a contractor's facility. And then we have some automotive minor uses. As well as to the east, we have some more automotive uses such as an auto body repair shop. Just to give the context of the area structure plan, it's within the Northridge area structure plan. And it is designated as a highway commercial swing site. The purpose of these areas is to accommodate either multifamily residential or commercial uses in the future. This does not include any automotive, either minor or major repairs. So here we have the land use context. DC nine was originally created to accommodate similar uses to a commercial transition zone. However, it was also to allow for outdoor storage to accommodate another proposed business in the area. You can see it's residential to the west, surrounded by commercial arterial and commercial transition. Not, and none of these uses currently support automotive repair, either minor or major. So for the application, we have the following concerns. The area is intended to serve as a buffer between residential and commercial arterial uses. And so an auto body repair shop would not be ideal for this. It does not conform to the Northridge area structure plan. We are also worried that this type of development might cause certain nuisances, just noise and odors. Also, this type of, excuse me, having this type of development might influence what is built on adjacent properties. Just because once this is in there, what's suitable next door changes. And also, we feel that it would be more appropriate in a general industrial district, which is meant for these types of uses. So administration recommends that council defeat second reading of bylaw amendment C 1260 dash 13.
At this point, we have, I believe we have presentations from, or sorry, we have questions for administration. So we have Counselor Rice.
If you could go back to your maps. I'm, I'm confused by your statement that it doesn't fit in that area. If you, keep going back, back, back. There, look at, you've got an automotive repair shop. You've got a, a autoglass shop. You've got a construction company. You've got another auto body shop. You've got a radiator shop. It would seem to me that Kingdom Hall is the one that doesn't fit. Not this use. You know, it, it fits perfectly fine in that area as you drive down that road. I, you know, I, I'm just really confused as to say it doesn't fit in that area. It, in, in my world, it fits in that area.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Toronto. Just a quick question. Helen, Counselor Rice is already taking the words out of my mouth here. I agree with her totally on it. But there's a sidewalk. The sidewalk's going to be on the west side there. Am I wrong or correct? And there won't be a sidewalk on the side that the building's going?
I can't speak to the kind of infrastructure.
I don't think there is right now. So traffic is unless you're walking the road. Okay, can I ask that one?
Counselor Clayton, I think I should note right now is that we're, this is for questions for administration. I think we'll have debate later on after the submissions, so.
Yeah, I apologize. I have no questions for administration at this point.
Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, can I just? Can I ask the administration to put that map back on the wall again? My question I'd like to ask is would they be coming off of 102nd to enter that lot? Or would it be coming in through the, I guess, or would the approach going into the property be? Has it been looked at at this point in time or not?
I have not been provided with the site plan.
Fair enough.
Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Counselor Tarrant. Yeah, so my question really is a follow up to Helen and then Kevin. So what, how do you see the difference between what's the automotive and equipment repair and sales that is presently CA and an auto body that you say needs to be in industrial? Like what's the, you know, the fundamental distance differences and why they're classified differently?
Well, the current uses there are nonconforming. They must have been grandfathered in. So they are not permitted in commercial arterial or commercial transition zones. So they must have been preexisting when the land use planning was designed that way. So the judgment is based on reflection of division for the area and the planning for the future. And so as this area transitions to be more suitable to the adjacent residential uses, we don't want to continue developing light industrial.
At this point, there's no other questions for administration. I will look for any, anybody speaking in favor of this proposal. Like to come forward, state your name for the record.
Counselors, I'm Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering. The application on behalf of KCM Construction. So today we have with us Matt Buckta with KCM Construction and also Jeff Adams with Jay Adams Auto Body. So he's the owner of the future business that we would like to put there. Just give you a brief summary of kind of how we got to this place and then answer a couple of questions that have come up that planning hasn't been able to. So the DC nine zoning, mostly you may remember that came through as a direct control, basically as an alternative to the CT zoning, which we found quite restrictive. And, and we're having a difficult time getting businesses that could work in that area. So DC nine is very specific zoning. And it's actually a zoning that, that works more through a site plan than it does through the list of uses that's, that you see in your typical land use bylaws in districts. So the way it works is we've got the parking and buildings focused on 102nd Street and the industrial outdoor storage type of part of the business focused on 101st Street, which is where the heavier businesses tend to be today. It helps us to comply a little bit easier with the existing uses and whatnot. So the parking lots that are at the front are intended to be all landscaping and whatnot. It's focused up there. So the idea is to make 102nd Street still look quite attractive from the street with the business frontage and whatnot out there and keep all the storage and, and more heavier, heavier industrial and materials like that outside in the rear and up against 101st. So the, we do have another map as well, but you've, you have just kind of seen all the adjacent uses and they're quite, quite similar and, and seem to be that this would, I would agree with Helen Rice, that, that these would fit within that. So now the accesses, we did get a question around that. And I'll give you an idea that, so the accesses were approved with the Northridge Business, Business Center Plan, which was done in 2005. So the accesses, if you drive out there today, you'll see the drop curbs and whatnot installed. So there is an access currently off of the 102nd Street Road, as well as within the DC nine zoning. It does allow accesses for the industrial type of traffic to come in off of 101st. So that's the intention of it, is to place the building, have all the, the customer traffic and kind of light traffic coming in off of 102nd and the heavier industrial traffic to come in off of the gravel road on 101st. So hopefully that clears that up. And this is very specific to a business. Obviously, we have a business owner here with us. So there's a, there's a land purchase that is contingent on this. So, and I believe he would like to go as, as quickly as possible. So if you have any questions for myself or not being, being the developer in the area or the business owner, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Toronto. Scott, a question, there's going to be on the front of this if the building goes proceed in parking, we're going to have some trees and landscaping as quoted as asked in their bylaw. That's for sure, right?
Yeah, everything would still comply with the landscaping components of the bylaw. So there's nothing different within the DC nine zoning.
And I know Counselor O'Toole brought up about in the back alley, there's probably going to be gate to bring equipment in from the back. Because I remember before, a few years ago, they came about certain buildings going there and that's how they were going to apply it. Is that what's the protocol looking at?
The, so the only restriction in the zoning, I guess, is that the building has to sit between the parking lot and the, and the rear storage industrial type of an area. So if, if they put up a fence, obviously the gates would come in off there. And most businesses are not going to drive by their front building. So I can't speak to the exact use of the site until the site plan is completed. But that's the intention of the zoning is that, is that whatever heavier traffic comes off of the 101st accesses.
Okay, and that's the last one. I believe Jeff, your business is across from Canfor. Well, it looks very nice and it's always kept clean.
I'll just touch on that real quick about what Scott was saying. Jeff's site plan, the way he's done it as well, I know this is site specific to what Jeff's doing. It's exactly what Scott was saying. It's going to be set up in almost like an L shape, is it not? With the majority of the building blocking the back storage yard where all the vehicles would need to be, I guess. And so it leaves a small portion of a gate to drive around the building. So that was the whole intent was to, and Jeff knows we tried to keep that DC zoning and when we talked about it initially, the whole plan was to, to cover that, anything stored in the backyard, right? So they've, they're completely complying with that, so.
Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Counselor Tarrant. I've got a question regarding, and I think you've already answered part of it, the, the hours of operation. Would it be a six day a week operation or five days? So there'd be not a lot of evening work? So that, the way the building is constructed, the, the future on the west side of the road probably won't hear any noise from that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Redburn?
Counselor Tarrant, actually Kevin, I have a similar question to Kevin. I just wanted you to speak to the potential noise and odor problem in that area. Do you see any concern?
We're going to build a fully insulated building. We're going to do everything we can to get your noise down. As far as orders and stuff, we're completely POC compliant. Less emissions. We use the most state of the art water based things.
I do have another question for administration at some point, Counselor Tarrant. So you can let me know.
Can we wait till there's any further questions for presenters? Thank you so much for presenting. Counselor Redburn?
There are a number of uses that are permitted under DC nine. It's essentially the same as what would be permitted in a commercial transition zone. So there wouldn't be any necessary escalation of types of industrial uses. Concern is more that if there is this used put in, then you wouldn't necessarily get something like a family restaurant or multifamily residential wanting to go in the adjacent properties. The southern lot is actually currently being developed. So the far northern lot is the only one that would remain in question.
And if I may, Counselor Tarrant, Stuart Ray, senior planner with the city. Just also to go back to counsel's question about the distinction between a minor and major use. The key distinction basically for automotive is that it's body repair in major, which effectively comes down to the potential for panel beating, stuff of that nature for vehicles, which is considered certainly an industrial type activity that could be obnoxious to surrounding uses. So therefore, and you know, hearing the, the question and the comment that, you know, they, the business currently, I believe operates opposite Canfor, which I believe is commercial arterial and industrial behind compared to here. We're talking about uses that are in existence. When you're talking automotive glass, of course, you're not talking the likes of panel beating, which is a major activity.
At this point, is there anybody that would like to speak against the proposal? Right, at this time, we will close the public hearing then and move on to 6.1.5, a business arising from the hearing. We have a couple of recommendations here. Is there a counselor that would, the recommendation? All right. Thank you, Counselor Rice. I'll open it up for debate. We have Counselor Redburn. Oh, sorry. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Counselor Tarrant. I will be supporting the motion in regards to having second reading tonight for this bylaw. I think that based on the explanation that the developer, as well as the business owner have explained, this is a great use for this. And, and, and not to seem wrong in regards of what's going on around there, but the thing that is inappropriate there is the church. Everything else there is industrial automotive type based. And I think that it's a perfect fit. These are going to be backyards to the west of this. It's not like these people are going to be looking out their front window at a body shop. So I think it's a great fit and I will be supporting the motion.
Sir, just clarification. Counselor Rice, you're moving, you are moving second reading. You're not moving recommendation. Excellent. All right, Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I'll be voting in favor of this. If you were to just go a block north, there's a automotive recycling center right there. Harry's auto wrecking and just, and not too far from there is Windsor Auto Body and there's tractor sales. So I, I do, as Mr. McLean has mentioned, that they have, already have a current business in town. And that building site is very nice and well kept. And I drove down there today actually to do a kind of a once over. And they could sure use another rose in that area to clean up the neighborhood. So I'm going to be voting in favor and I would encourage my other council members to do the same.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Toronto. As you know, I'll be voting in favor as well by the way of questions I was asking. I believe this would be great. And maybe for Counselor Thieson, they'll grow an apple tree and have an edible plant in the front. But one of the reasons is some of the information we asked administration about sidewalks and that were not there. And another one was a map, was an older map of showing of the development that is newer. And I think that we can bring that up to date down the road and more straightforward on that. Thank you.
Seeing no further debates, I'll put my two cents in. I will be supporting this motion as well. Well, I, I recognize that, you know, the intent of the land use bylaws there was to, you know, provide that transition. I think that what's already been grandfathered in that case would make it a suitable spot for this type of activity. And I don't think it would be out of line with, with the community would expect from that, that parcel of land. And so, and I, and I'm pleased to, that, I'm pleased that there's still going to be the landscaping requirements and that it will be, you know, the 102nd Street will be a nice frontage for the residential across the road there. I will call the vote on the second reading. Passes. Does someone like to move their reading? Counselor? Counselor Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C 1260 dash 13.
Any further discussion or debate? Call a question? And that passes unanimously. That ends the public hearing. That ends the public hearing portion of the agenda, and we'll move now into reports and a look to administration to for report on eight point one, the Arbor Hills area structure plan.
Mr. Mayor, administration is recommending that bylaw C twelve twelve C to amend the areas, the Arbor Hills area structure plan begin first reading, that bylaw C thirteen oh seven to adopt the Trader Ridge outline plan be given first reading, that bylaw C twelve sixty dash sixteen, the land use bylaw, to amend the land use bylaw be given first reading, and that Monday, October sixth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty PM in council chambers, be established as the date, time, and location for public hearing purposes. This area is located directly west of a Hundredth Street and north of a Hundred and Thirty Second Avenue, and the amendment establishes a detailed development concept for the area known as Trader Ridge.
Excuse me, I have recommendations. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Tarrant, I was move that bylaw C dash twelve twelve C, an amendment to the Arbor Hills area structure plan be given first reading.
And we don't have discussion and debate on first reading, so I will call the vote. That passes unanimously.
I'll move that bylaw C dash one three oh seven, being a bylaw to adopt the Trader Ridge outline plan be given first reading.
We'll call the vote. This is unanimously.
I'll keep going, I'll move the bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash sixteen, being an amendment to the land use bylaw be given first reading. Should've finished it off, I guess.
And finish it off.
And that Monday, October sixth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty PM, at City Council Chambers be established date, time, and location for public hearings.
Passes unanimously, that concludes the report, the portion of the agenda, we'll move on to committee business and Councillor Radburn. And yes, we do have just a couple matters of procedure here, Councillor Thiessen mentioned some of the, there were some changes to some of the minutes, and they were not actually in the previous council meeting, they were in some of the committee reports, so we'll have to have those as amended.
Thank you, Councillor Tarrant, I would move the council receive the minutes of the special community living committee meeting held August twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. Just a quick context for this, um, this was a meeting, uh, the special community, living committee to look at FCSS and community social impact funding requests for our four year budget forthcoming. Uh, what you see in the report is administration's kind of a project, administration's recommendation, what committee of the day, uh, we had most of council are actually the helping committee living committee, um, kind of the the feeling of the group relative where that request stands. Um, there are some that have outstanding information that council needs to make a decision, and that will be forthcoming before before budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Radburn, and the discussion and debate on those minutes? And Councillor Redburn, you were moving those as amended?
Yes, be great.
I will call the vote. Passes. Do you wanna highlight anything else? This is another one.
Yes, um, thank you very much, Councillor. Uh, Community Growth Committee meeting held on August twenty sixth, I would like to make motion the council receive those minutes for the community growth.
Move as amended?
Yes.
Call the vote? Is there anything you'd like to highlight from those?
Yes, uh, there was a number of items that come up for reports, uh, and driveway widths bylaw, we are going to look into this and have the administration do a report and come back to council with some recommendations. Uh, we did a discretionary use on an origis- religious assembly that is taking over a new building, and they needed to get the bylaw changed and the land use changed so they could move in, and that was done at that meeting. And I've got one item that I would like to talk about, it's the Grand Prairie Storm contract renewal for the twenty fourteen, twenty seventeen. Uh, the both the administration and the storm sat at the table, negotiated for this three year term, and I will just move that council approve the proposed three year agreement with the Swan City Hockey Association, operating as the Grand Prairie Storm Hockey Club for the use of Revolution Place commencing September first, twenty fourteen, and continuing up to and including the thirty first day of August in twenty seventeen.
Councillor O'Toole, is there any discussion and debate on the motion? Councillor Redburn?
Councillor Tarrant, I just encourage my colleagues to support the motion. I think President of the Storm Hockey Association and Jane did a good job in terms of looking at both interests and trying to balance those interests. It's a challenging time for the storm, so there's a slight reduction, uh, but there is an increase in, once things turn around, in sharing of the, I guess, not profits, but monies, revenues over expenditures in the future. So at the back end, I think that will work out for both parties. Thank you.
Seeing no other session, I will call the vote. And that passes. Now move on to Lauren again, Councillor Redburn?
Thanks again. Uh, I would move council receive the minutes of the committee living committee meeting held August twenty sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Don't know if there, is this another amended one? Is this another amended one or not? This is fine? Phew, whoa, all right, not as amended, just as they are.
Is there any discussion and debate? Call the vote. Councillor Redburn, did you wanna highlight?
I'm gonna do the two motions and I'll do some other highlights if that works. Uh, second, so second motion would be, I would move council approve the proposed City of Grand Prairie recognition award nominating committee terms of reference, um, as amended, what you received today, uh, includes amendments that were made at at committee. We had a good discussion and tweaked the draft brought forward by Mr. Stevens. Uh, this is a committee that we hope will help initiate greater, I guess, profile and response to requests for nominees in the future. So this is a committee that will be charged with the responsibility of kind of sharing, recruiting, recommending to council final decisions.
Councillor Rice?
I just, kudos to the committee, I think this is in excellent terms of reference, and I would be surprised if it didn't meet the objectives that were laid out. Uh, I'll be supporting the motion and and again, congratulations to the committee for taking this initiative.
Seeing no further discussion, I will call the vote. Excellent. Councillor Redburn?
Thank you, I would move that council adopt the Grand Prairie Pest Management Policy number seven oh three. Um, this really, uh, this policy is all about ensuring that that the integrated pest management process, which is presently the industry standard, will apply to the City of Grand Prairie as well, so it'll be for ourselves and for contractors who are doing work. The pro- the process reduces the amount of pesticides entering the environment, considers non-target effects, and helps protect public assets. Thank you.
Discussion? Vote? Councillor Redburn, did you wanna?
Great, thank you, yeah, a couple of other things that happened at committee, I'll share at this point. Uh, Catholic Family Services were there to provide a report, an update. Uh, following their presentation, admin was directed by committee to gather information on on mental health services, services, capacities, and issues in our region, and report back to council to help us in advocacy efforts, so that would, that report will be coming back. Uh, Grand Prairie McSloppits League representative came, talking about the need for additional diamonds and South Bear Creek diamonds, uh, and so a motion there was amended to work with the league to identify potential improvements to South Bear Creek diamonds, including additional diamonds and funding sources. This group actually had some monies to contribute to a project, so that report will be coming back to committee before a decision is made in terms of any referral to budget. Uh, the turf grass management plan was accepted for information, and that will lead to some resource requests come budget time, and a piece library system looking at a three, four year request for increased, well, not for this coming year, but after that, of an increase for the next two or three years. And we'd asked, committee asked administration to review those, that request, and bring back a recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Radburn, I just wanna add, from that meeting, it was the South Beach Ball Association there, it was incredible to hear how busy they were and how much they've grown over ninety games every week played in Grand Prairie, but it's a tremendous organization and I'm pleased to, you know, to support them, look forward to supporting them more in the budget time. Uh, we will now move to council committee the whole for August twenty seventh, Jackie, would you like to move?
I'd like to move the, uh, as amended. I would move that council accept the minutes as amended for the committee the whole meeting held on Monday, um, August twenty seventh, Wednesday, August twenty seventh, um, that would be the amendment. Uh, this was a meeting for community group funding grant requests for discussion of committee the whole, and these were community groups that fall under recreation and sport, transit, culture, and heritage, and as well as community social development.
Thank you, Councillor Clayton, is there any discussion on those minutes? All right, so I will call the vote. Passes, thank you. We will now move into council members' reports, we have a couple, so we'll start with Councillor O'Toole, I believe you had a couple this week?
Thank you very much, Mr. Tarrant. Uh, yes, we've got competitive sports event happening, uh, the promoter is Accessive Force, which is a local company here in town. Uh, it's due to take place at the NTRAC Center on October twenty fourth, it's a Friday night, and I would encourage you all to get on your competitive sports gear and flags and come on down and cheer on the competitors, if that's your fancy. Um, we are also going through a process now where we're re- where we are reviewing some of our bylaws to update them to the current, uh, well, with the current provincial concerns that we have right now with no amateurs fighting in the province of Alberta, and so we've got some stuff there that we're dealing with over the next year. Uh, we will be probably coming in the next couple of weeks to council to have them pass and just to make our commission, uh, one of the best in the country. Uh, we were the fourth busiest commission in Canada last year, so throwing that out. And I've also got an update on the Philip J. Currie. Um, recently, Brian Brake, who's been spearheading the project for a number of years and fundraising and getting the the museum itself, the structure off the ground, is taking, well, he's done his job, he got the building up and the fundraising looked after, and now he's moving on to another cycle in his life, and we've hired a new person, his name happens to be, uh, George Jacob. Uh, and if you did get a chance to meet him, he was at the Dino Ball, was also at the key ceremony here at City Hall, he's up from Texas, and he's got a resume that would most people would love to have. Uh, he's been all over the world and been involved in some of the major museums throughout the world, and we are having a little bit of a get together tomorrow to make it all official and final, so those are my two reports.
Thank you, Councillor O'Toole, we'll go on to Councillor Redburn.
Thank you, Councillor Tarrant, just a quick update, we have downtown business association board meeting on August twenty seventh, um, as in terms of agenda items as they relate to the city, there was discussion about graffiti relative to the new community standards bylaw, downtown business, businesses, snow removal enforcement, and garbage bins, and a couple of garbage bins, and so we're working with the city and staff relative to those issues. Other point of note would be that the downtown association's session with our infrastructure assessment team was very, very well received, so kudos to our consultants for that. Thank you.
Would you like to begin with round table?
Gotcha. Uh, just, uh, August twenty sixth, we had Transport Canada funding announcement out at the airport, um, uh, we met with information session with Rachel Naughtley, M O N D P, MLA and Leadership Hopeful. Um, the municipal governance symposium was very, very well received on the fifth. Parkinson's Step and Stride Walk, uh, as I mentioned to the group, I was voluntold to do the emcee there, and thank you to Councillor Thiessen for speaking, and thanks for, to Councillor O'Toole for joining, joining us. Uh, today I attended the victim services twenty fifth anniversary celebration, and that's a a group and a service that I didn't know too much about, admittedly, uh, they are coming to committee here and shortly, and to committee living, but was pleased to to join the celebration and learn about their work, so. And one quick one, I usually don't do this, but I will, I did it, because this isn't a council related thing, I again attended on September second the retired teachers' breakfast. So first day of school, first for students, retired teachers in the area, all get together and have a breakfast, and there were eighty-eight, I think, of us this time, it's growing each year, uh, so it's a nice time and a good chance to reconnect with my colleagues from the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh, Tarrant. Uh, it was a busy couple of weeks, I had an opportunity, as many councillors, to attend the Transport Canada announcement as well, an opportunity to go on a tour of the seven, seven generations energy field, and it truly was a really educating opportunity, I was very happy to go, they are generous hosts, and I learnt a lot that day. Uh, we are very fortunate to live in a region that we do that has such great opportunities in the future, and it was really, I really enjoyed that tour as well, um, I attended the governance symposium and the Victims Assistance Celebration today. I did wanna say, though, as, um, MLA Wayne Drysdale mentioned yesterday, I had the opportunity with Reeve Lee and Boprey to announce at the Tour of Alberta Stage Five that was supported by the Palmeroy in its suites group. Um, to attend yesterday, I attended a couple of the events last week, uh, the opportunity that Grand Prairie has next year in September, uh, the city as well as the county to host two of the events is mind boggling, I don't think that many people, unless you've been there, realize I don't think that many people, unless you've been there, realize the vastness of this event. A hundred and fifty-six million households across the world watch this race. There's racers from all over the world. It is, it's free for families, it's exciting, there's things going on continually every day in every community that hosts it. And yesterday, we were fortunate enough to get a live feed from Sportsnet on our announcement, so it was a great opportunity to announce, and then next year will be an excellent worldwide opportunity to showcase our, our region. So that was really exciting, and I was really happy to do that, so thank you.
Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mr. Tarrant. I did attend events this last two-week period. I did speak at the transport announcement for the airport, and that funding was for an overlay and also a new fire truck that will put us back into place with the regulations for the national airports firefighting service and population-wise. Uh, I did enjoy a field trip of Seven Generations as well. We went out to their, their field. We toured on land, and then we went for a flight in a helicopter to see the environmental impact that they're doing and see where the big pipeline is going to Chicago. And I can tell you that these, this individual that took us on the tour, the CEO of the company, is, his, his promise to us was environment was very important and looking after the people of the region. And I think you're gonna hear good things from this company. They're very innovative, they've got support worldwide, they're putting on tours pretty much on a weekly basis from investors. The unique thing that I seen was a drilling operation with three wells per drilling with two different companies, and the, if you can imagine about 25 different companies working in one site, and security and safety was the utmost important. The CEO of the company got geared about his safety and awareness, just like anybody else that would come on to this job site. Another event that I attended was the GP Youth Emergency Shelter Sunrise Open House. It's a tour that they put on every, or lunch that they put on every year with tours and questions of the facility, and a very worthwhile project that the City of Grand Prairie has, and I'm very proud that we have that program in town. And last Thursday, I met with some of the city and mayors from the region of, from province of Alberta for the mayor's, mid-sized mayor's conference. We had a little open house for them, and they were all looking forward to the discussion taking place on Friday, and, which was our symposium on, on regionalization. Very forward-thinking people, very, uh, very interested in what the discussion was gonna be taking place. They weren't looking necessarily for answers, but they wanted to know what people were thinking about in Western Canada, and we did have people from all over Western Canada at this symposium. And I did enjoy my three-kilometer walk with Councilor Chris Thiessen at the Step and Stride for Parkinson's, and I want to thank the organizers for that, and that's my report, sir.
Councilor O'Toole? Councilor Rice?
Attended the Federation of Canadian Municipalities meeting in Quebec. Discussion was extremely intense, of course, as to the Build Canada Fund and some of the decisions they've made and the timing of announcement and, and so on. Also, affordable housing was a big topic of discussion, so it was three intensive days of discussions and meetings that started at quarter after seven in the morning and went till 10 o'clock at night. So all areas of Canada are represented, so you can imagine when you have the mayor of Vancouver and someone from a small Newfoundland fishing village and try to get a consensus to take forward to the federal government, but certainly, I think, very productive and interesting discussions.
Thank you, Councilor Rice. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Councilor Tarrant. I attended several events over the last two weeks, 13 different ones, in fact, over, I guess, eight days of availability, from the 26th to the 29th. I was volunteer camp councillor at Moonbeam's Youth Empowerment Camp. Of course, it has nothing to do with city council, but I just loved seeing the joy on children's faces, so I had to pass up the helicopter ride and the dinner, the wine dine, and the tour of the Seven Generations, but that was great as it was. Uh, some of the events I did attend, though, was a meeting with the NDP MLA and Leadership Hopeful, Rachel Naughtley. I also attended the GP Youth Emergency Shelter tour. I also donned the, the red coat as well as a fluorescent orange shirt to remind parents to slow down, that school zone season was back in, and so we did that with the Grand Prairie Storm. It was in their own bylaw officers as well, so it was a lot of smiling faces, the kids going back to school. Um, I also attended the Step and Stride, and I very much enjoyed my walk with Councilor O'Toole, and to speak on behalf of council in the City of Grand Prairie to support the event, talking with Councilor Redburn. I hope he can correct me, but if I'm wrong, hopefully I'm not, but actually raised well over $20,000 for, for the event, which is an increase over previous years, 25. Yeah, I want to say 25, but I, I didn't, I didn't want to go overboard, but I love going overboard sometimes. Um, and, no. I, I accepted the opportunity to drop the puck at the Storm game this, this past Friday, thinking that it might bring the team some luck. Unfortunately, we lost that game, but I still had a good time hanging out with the Revolution Auto Group people and, as well as Tasman Jute. They did, yes, but not that night I was there. But the good news is, is that the team that they lost to was wearing the same colors as my favorite NHL hockey team, so I was, I was into the color scheme. Uh, finally, I do want to speak a little bit about an event I attended on my birthday. I was invited to a VIP event, uh, to Fort McMurray, of all places, and once I was invited, I was told I could bring guests, so I invited Harold Belford from the county to join me on the trip. We were there to look into an ecological carnival called Sustainable, which is just your basic education and carnival exposure, where all the rides ran on solar power and biodiesel energy, and they're really pushing to spread, I guess, the carnival love around the province, and when I contacted them, they were very interested, so they invited me and anyone else who wanted to go. So Mr. Belford and I had a great time there, and we got to speak with the mayor, Melissa Blake, who also spoke very highly of the event, and then I got to join her again at our community symposium here. So it's nice getting to know our, our fellow council leaders around the province, and yeah, I guess, it's pretty much the highlights of my, my weeks.
Thank you, Councilor Thiessen.
Thank you. Attended quite a number of events as well. I won't repeat the, any except for three of them, because they, all three had some significance, special significance to me. The first was the, uh, tour of, was the announcement by Transport Canada for the infrastructure money for the airport, and as I served on the, have been serving on the commission there, it was a special announcement for us, and it's going to enhance the service that we will have. Second item I wanted to mention, it's been mentioned as well before, is the barbecue at Sunrise House. I had privilege of serving on the board of directors of Sunrise House for a number of years, so it was good to go back and participate in the celebration of the job that they do, the work they do in our community. And finally, I want to mention also the governance symposium held on September the 5th, and the point that was significant to me on, on this thing was it was a true symposium in terms of a great deal of input from various sides of the various questions, various expertise from, not just from Alberta, but from across Canada as well. And the nice thing was that I, I think there were people that were maybe expecting this was going to be some sort of a war or a huge debate or have the people in the street rioting. This was what it was supposed to be, a good opportunity to get a common base of information for the people that are going to maybe making some pretty important decisions over the next couple of years. So kudos to all of the organizers of all three of those events. Thank you.
I think my mic's off. Now it's on. Thank you very much. You've done a good job. We had a couple council committee of whole meetings, and it's, you know, we always have them, but lately they're happening with the budget, and our administration, manager, and directors are working very hard and diligently to get this done for a four-year budget and all areas of services, so thank you, and I know it's a lot of hard work, but it'll come in the fall, and it'll, we'll have it taken care of for four years, so I was glad to be at those meetings. Uh, another one I was at, I was, Councilor O'Toole brought up, first was the Youth Emergency Shelter, it was, you know, barbecue they put on for the sun, for their health there, but it's very important in our community that we are doing things like this, for some of the individuals that really need it at a time in their lives. And the other one I want to speak to is our governance symposium. Strategically, we have getaways and plans and what we hope in council achieve and look at, and this went above what we expected for attendance of mayors and councillors in the community. We had representation from Wildrose, NDP, PC, MLAs, and we also had the leader of Raj Sherman there as well, looking at this. So I mean, that spoke volumes in itself, and was there for the whole day, not just an hour, but the whole day, and, and stayed. And I believe when you look at who took part for the regional grant, Towne Grand Caste, which is in financial trouble a little bit because the way the system is, Coal Lake, which was near bankruptcy but had things change in Grand Prairie, which we have issues of ourselves, all three that are involved in this are looking at within Alberta province, why are we so rich, and some areas are going bankrupt and having issues. So it is a big first step, as Councilor Logan's saying, everybody talking, but hopefully we're moving forward on some major ideas and discussions in the province. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McLean, and that brings us to the end here. We've survived without imploding, so it's good news. Just a couple highlights for me the last couple of weeks here. This symposium was definitely a huge highlight. Kudos to everyone that helped organize it. It was a great information sharing session, and I certainly learned a lot, and I look forward to, you know, keeping this, this issue going and keeping it on the agenda. This weekend, I had the opportunity to attend a fundraiser for Ronald McDonald House, and I wanted to give kudos to Greg Dudas, who is a local business owner here in town and who has put on this event for a couple of years now, and raising awareness and raising a significant number of dollars for Ronald McDonald House. I was also excited to hear about the enthusiasm and passion for starting up a Ronald McDonald House here in Grand Prairie for when the new hospital is, is opened up, and there seemed to be a very strong financial support and very strong support overall for, for that here, so it was exciting to see. With that, I will thank everyone for bearing with me this meeting, and we'll call the meeting adjourned.